Thank you for coming tonight. Pursuant to the Open Police Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised against our press issue of November 30th, 2011. All municipal clerks, townships, and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting notices have been met. Minutes approval? Okay, there are none. That brings us to communications, which are on file in the board secretary's office. And we'd like to take care of our public participation first because we have a lot of awards to get out. So, no one signed up to make a comment? Is there anyone in the audience that has a concern or... Oh, I'm sorry. Who need to make a motion? Bill?
Yes.
Make the motion to move the motion.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, anybody have a problem? Excellent. Sean?
Mr. Astetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazza?
No.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
So, is there anyone who has a comment or a concern and didn't get a chance to sign up? Excellent. Excellent. Okay, that brings us to a motion to close.
Second.
This is turning out to be an incredible meeting. Okay, and that brings us to my favorite part of the... Oh, yes.
Mr. Astetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin? Mrs. Laff?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera? We're closing. Mr. Mazza?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to the award section of the evening. And first up, we have Colts Nick.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see such a nice crowd and happy holidays to everybody. At Colts Nick, we have several very nice young people that we wanted to acknowledge this evening. Let me start with two young ladies who made First Team All-Shore Girl Soccer. Let me begin with a sophomore midfielder, Megan Mulligan. Megan, as a sophomore, she had seven goals, six assists this past season. For a total, her first two years in the program, seventeen goals, nine assists over two years. So, she's an important ability block to the future. A senior we would also like to acknowledge for winning First Team All-Shore Girl Soccer is Rachel Hyvenicki. Rachel? Rachel had eleven goals, ten assists this past season for a total career of twenty-two goals, twenty-six assists. And she's moving on to play soccer at Ryan's University when she leaves the district. So, congratulations. We also had a gymnast do extremely well this year. We had a young lady who was All-Shore Conference and NJSIAA State Champion in the Balance Team, Miss Courtney Davia. Congratulations to her. Great job. The next young lady I'd like to acknowledge earned her Girl Scout Gold Award, which is equivalent to the Eagle Scout, the highest honor that you can earn in the Girl Scouts. This young lady did a tremendous project to earn her award. I'm gonna call Alyssa Capeleri up and I'll talk a little bit about her project. Alyssa, let me know. A bi-monthly bowling league for children with special needs that ran from the previous October all the way through this past summer. During that time, twenty special needs students were organized into a bowling league. Alyssa took on the organization of all the team volunteers and organized the last day trophy certificate and pizza and ice cream cake party for the special children. So, congratulations. Great job. And then our last award winner for tonight is a wonderful young man who did some tremendous work in the community. Let me first introduce Ben Palmeri. That's mine. Ben worked on behalf of an organization called Beauty Foundation for Friends. This is an organization dedicated to young adults who are devoted to building friendship, raising money, and celebrating the lives of children and teens living with cancer. Recently, Ben was responsible for participating and running and adopting a family program for the holidays that's ongoing. Over the Thanksgiving holidays, helped organize and participated in their Basket for Aid, which put together over a hundred baskets for families in need. And what he's being honored for tonight is his work over the past year raising sixty-five thousand dollars on behalf of this organization. That's it from Colts Nick tonight. Congratulations, everybody. You've got the evening.
Do you have a club we have real high school?
Okay, good evening, everyone. For starters, I just want to say happy holidays to everyone. And a big congratulations to all of this evening's award recipients, not just Freehold High School, obviously, that's why I'm here this evening, but just want to say congratulations to everyone collectively as a district. You guys are pretty awesome, so great job. Back to the Department of Education. It's always a pleasure to come on up here. We appreciate you fitting us in three times a year to really recognize some of the outstanding achievements of our students and student athletes, club members, and other significant accomplishments. So, thank you. Okay, first up here for Freehold Borough High School, we might have to listen carefully. We had a student that earned what's called the Google Code In Award. I'll speak briefly to the topic and then I'll call up a teacher from our Computer Science Academy to elaborate a little bit more. But for starters, I'll tell you that it was a contest for pre-university students ages thirteen to eighteen. It was related to open source software development. How many people here know what that is? Few hands, not bad. There were students from forty-eight countries completing over two thousand tasks in a seven-week contest. And at this point, as I mentioned before, I'll call up a teacher from our Computer Science Academy, Mr. Jim Gill, to introduce the students. Hey, I guess we had a student, Nolan Munle, that could come up right now. Nolan? It was from about forty-eight countries and many, many students. The grand prize winners were invited to go out to the Googleplex in Mountain View, California, where they met with engineers, college professors, and a lot of people from Google. Nolan participated in developing some open source codes. He used Perl and C languages and some machine-level coding. Specifically, he was involved with the Power Foundation, the Video Land Foundation, and the Dragonfly DSD Project. Nolan is part of our Freehold Computer Science League, and he's been involved in winning teams before. Specifically, last year, he and two other students were the winners in the entire state of New Jersey High School, I'm sorry, New Jersey Institute of Technology High School Programming Contest. Also, a couple summers ago, I elected him to come to Monmouth University with us, where he participated in RFIP research in robots and worked with college professors and college students and made an awesome presentation, which I believe Mr. Lawson witnessed, he was there with us. So, it was my pleasure to present him with this award. He's one of fourteen students in the entire world and three from the United States. Nolan, congratulations for a great job. Okay, next up for Freehold Borough High School, I would like to call our music director, Mrs. Pamela Massimini. We had several students earn All-Shore Chorus Honors, and Mrs. Massimini will introduce those students.
Good evening, all. These four students from Freehold High School will be participating in the All-Shore Chorus Concert that will take place in February at Neptune High School. Throughout the month of January, they'll be going through rehearsals twice a week, three hours at a time, and we participate, we're working with music that is a little bit more than what they get at the high school at art level at this time. It's a little more advanced and a great opportunity to participate with about one-hundred-and-fifty other students from Monmouth and Ocean County. So, our four students that received this honor are Evan Kudish, he's a sophomore, and he's in the position of tener one. And the second round two section was Erica Bisberg. Senior member, Base One, Matthew Shauerman. This is his second time in the junior division. And lastly, juniors, the round two, Julianne Scott. This is her third time appearing in the All-Shore Chorus.
Okay, we shift gears here a little bit to Freehold Borough High School. We're gonna move over to our athletics department. It was another phenomenal fall season at the Borough. Soon enough, we'll be hanging nine team championship banners up in our main gym for this past fall season. Okay, our girls' soccer program, our boys' soccer program, and two of the programs that are here tonight to be honored are field hockey and gymnastics program. We have a bunch of Divisional Short Conference and State Championship banners, which we are very proud of. Right now, I want to focus on our field hockey program. This year's squad put together another memorable season, and they tallied a twenty-two and two overall record. Earned a third straight B-North crown with a perfect, ooh, I'm sorry. Yes, they were. They were perfect twelve and oh in divisional play. Made the second trip to the short conference tournament final in as many years. Unfortunately, we ran into that Shore Regional team, which is just an unbelievable statewide powerhouse every year. We just got edged out one-nothing at short conference final, but we were there. From there, in the States, we won our second consecutive state sectional title, a third overall, recorded a second straight group state title, and appeared in the very prestigious Tournament of Champions semifinals for a second year in a row. Ran into a team by the name of Eastern, which is an absolute state powerhouse again. I think they've won like five of the seven Tournament of Champions finals that have ever been played, just to give you an idea of the caliber of the team we ran into. But just another unbelievable season. At this point, what I'll do is I'll call up our head coach, Coach Geraldine Asubedo, who coincidentally this year is named the 2011-12 National Federation of High Schools' Field Hockey Coach of the Year for New Jersey. She was also the NJSIAA 2011 Field Hockey Sports Award winner. And I also want to call up Coach Asubedo's assistant, Mr. Stan Parker. At this point, Coach Asubedo will introduce the individual athletes from her program.
I would like to thank the board of ed, thank you very much for your support, Mr. Moses, Mr. Sampson, and of course, our administrators, Mrs. Jewel and Mr. Rannick, who are constantly supporting female athletics in our school. And I would be remiss to not mention my parents, and thank you for buying into our coaching philosophy and believing that academics and athletics do go hand in hand. Behind every great coach is a great assistant, so I'd like to thank my assistant, Stan Parker, for his years of dedication. I'd like to qualify players individually, and then we can do a clap hands at the end. Freshmen's, Emily Long, Melanie Gibson, and Lily Rattapulis. Sophomores, Katie Lucino, Alexis Arancio, Lauren Bop, Christine Flotterin, and First Team All-Shore, Haley Need. Juniors, Jessica Keelman and Alicia Thoret. And my unbelievable senior class, Elizabeth White, Emma Rivera, Karen Thoret, Pamela Martino, Brianna Gross, and First Team All-Shore, First Team All-State, Asbury Park Player of the Year, First Team All-Region, and All-American, Emily Holt.
All right, and last up for the Borough is our gymnastics team. This year's team tallied an unblemished thirteen and oh regular season record, was crowned a Raider Invitational Champion, earned a third B-North Division title in four years, won a second consecutive short conference title, recorded a second straight NJSIAA State Sectional Championship, and reached the pinnacle of success as a program after winning the overall NJSIAA Team Championship, number-one team in the entire state. Just kind of introduce the coaching staff, our head coach, and Asbury Park Press. Coach of the Year, Miss Katie Puzz. And Coach Puzz's assistant, Miss Lindsay Fuchs. And now, Coach Puzz will come up and introduce the individuals from her team.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for having us here tonight, and it's such a nice honor to come out and just show your support for all the teams throughout the district. And I want to say thank you to everybody who has supported our team throughout this whole entire season. It literally was a record-breaking season this year. Every team, at every tournament that we entered, not only did we win, but these girls set new records. And all the way up until the overall state championship meet, they set a new record, which was a great accomplishment. I'd like to call them up now individually, and after that, we'll talk about some of their all-district honors and so on. We have sophomore Maria Cusinelli. Sophomore Jenna Chrisally. Junior Shannon Skibor. Junior Julia Lee. Sophomore Cindy Veru. Junior Amanda Deltoque. Alyssa Lightner. I'd like to just mention a couple things about some of the girls that came up here. We had a couple different honors for all districts. We had Jenna Chrisally, Jen King, who could not be here tonight, and Danielle Verden. Amongst some of these girls, also for the All-Shore honors, we had first team, Shani Weiss, second team, Maria Cusinelli. First team was Jenna Chrisally, Jen King, and Danielle Verden. And then for the overall All-State team, we had three girls that were selected, and that was Jenna Chrisally, Jen King, and Danielle Verden. I know Jen couldn't make it here tonight, but I do just want to acknowledge Jen King. She was named the Central Jersey Section One State Gymnast of the Year. And there's one more person that I'd like to call up, that was our senior Danielle Verden. And throughout the whole entire year, she has accomplished so much, but overall, the final, the big one, she is the 2011 New Jersey State Gymnast of the Year. And again, amongst all the awards and honors and records that this team has set, it was a really nice way to end the year, but with the Star Ledger naming them the 2011 Gymnastics Team of the Year. I also, I'm sorry, maybe a former assistant code or volunteer code, I forgot about her. I'd like to just recognize her because between Coach Fuchs and Coach Hearn, they really don't always get all the recognition that they deserve, but it's always great knowing that they're there to support me and not just me, but the girls, and they have a hand in everything that goes on, so.
Next up, the Freehold Townships.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, similar to Mr. Rannick, we had that Freehold Township, we had to face Shore Regional, but we also have to face Freehold Borough. This was my first fall as a Sika, and I survived the earthquakes, the hurricanes, the rain, and even a snowstorm in October. So, it was quite an eventful fall to be a part of. First, I want to start out with All-Shore Chorus. We also had two members who will be performing in February at Neptune High School. Our two students are Kelsey McDonough, who's a sophomore, and Natalie Sidusmande, who's a senior. Also, before I begin the athletic part, I also just wanted to say, you know, thank you to, thank you to everyone, thank you to our board members, Mr. Mazza and Mr. Moses for being at many of the games and controlling yourself as spectators, you made my job easy, as well as, you know, the parents, our fans, as well as the athletes, who, you know, my big thing is sportsmanship, and they've represented themselves very well this fall. For all of our fall season, we had two A-North Championships in field hockey and cross-country, as well as a short conference championship in girl soccer and a Central Jersey Group Four State Championship in field hockey. So, congratulations to them. Before we get on to the teams, first want to introduce Dylan Tarpe. So, Dylan, come on up here. Dylan is a sophomore cross-country runner. He was just named First Team All-Shore, First Team All-County, and he is the Central Jersey Group Four State Champ with a time of fifteen minutes and fifty-two seconds. So, he's just kind of a nine-minute mile of shame. And, you know, in the last four, he placed first in four of his last five tourist season races, and Dylan was only a sophomore, so we look forward to having him another two years. All right. To get to our two teams. We had a coach this year who was recognized as Asbury Park Press Field Hockey Coach of the Year, as well as the Star Ledger Monmouth County Coach of the Year, and her name is Beth English. So, Beth, why don't you come on up? Beth has been our head coach for four years. We have won two sectional championships with her, and the only and the only two for field hockey in school history. And the thing is, Beth has never played field hockey before. Some things about Beth is that she will play anyone. Hey Beth, you're going to open up your season versus Freehold and then Shore, okay? She's okay with any kind of setbacks. It rained for two weeks, so why don't I go out there and see that our team is doing leapfrog? She will say it's all about the kids, but just watch her coach. She is a model for motivation, and she gets her athletes to perform above expectations. She can teach any coach lessons on making a team. Her energy is contagious, and the athletes perform because of her. So congratulations to Beth. So our field hockey team this year, they were A-North champs, as well as the Central Jersey Group Four State champs. This is a team that was really fun to watch. They had, it was a team with a lot of heart. If you went to any of our games, it was a lot of close games, a lot of overtime games. Beth lost a lot of weight this season. When we defeated Tom Rivera on the turf field, it looked like we were the team that actually played on turf all the time. The words come to mind with this team are heart, dedication, and fun. In the beginning of the season, Coach English was told by a press reporter that he had never heard of any of these girls' names. Now he should know them all as Central Jersey Group Four champs. So I'm going to let Beth introduce her team and her assistants.
Just like everybody, I'm so overwhelmed by the support, not only in Freehold Township, but in the district. And it's so nice picking up the paper and just seeing our district represented in such a great way. I'm proud and honored to be associated with this. So thank you for taking the time and recognizing that, because there's a lot of hard work here. You know, from administration to assistant coaches to freshman players. It's just awesome to be a part of it, and it's just very exciting. I'd also like to thank Mr. McAvoy for always being extremely positive and just being, you know, the best. We love you, so you spied your first year, don't go anywhere. Ever. So on that note, also, I want to recognize our girl soccer team that's going to be announced Shore Conference Championship, which is awesome. And it's just, it was an honor to share a locker room with you guys for three months. You guys are awesome, and I'm very proud of you also. So thank you very much. Just really quickly. Coaching at the high school level sport that you never played could be overwhelming, but it was my dad's last chance for a son, so it's okay. But really, why we were successful is because we had so much fun, and it was so positive. And it really started with our parents, our fan base, and the kids who just continuously gave me reasons to smile and laugh. Also, the support of my assistant coaches, which I'd like to call up right now, Christina Nunez and Kevin Zofie. They make my job very easy, and they make me look good. But trust me, it's them I just take class rights. So on to the team. Freshman, Michaela Pack. Sophomore, Mary Brennan, and this is Toby. Junior, Danielle Holker, Amanda Valhman, Rachel Sondren, Brianna Williams, and second-team all-shore, Sydney Ducey. And senior, Jess English, Novi Mayan. Again, thank you, everybody. Congratulations, girls soccer. Congratulations, everyone. It's just awesome. Feel the love, enjoy it.
All right, and last, our girls soccer team. They were this year, they were just named the Monmouth County Team of the Year by the Star Ledger, and they also were the Shore Conference Tournament Champions. So round of applause for them. In the tournament, we beat Monmouth County 2-0 in the first round, then Freehold Borough 2-0 in the quarterfinal, then Schultz Neck 2-0 in the semifinal, and we won 1-0 in the finals. So we went through the whole tournament without getting scored upon. So that's a great, great thing, girls. Round of applause for that. Before I call Coach Patterson up to introduce his players, three of the athletes did get some press honors. Marissa Demonte, first-team all-shore. Marissa will continue to play at Messiah College in the fall. And Christina Camassa, first-team all-shore, first-team all-county. Christina will continue to play at Villanova in the fall. I don't know if she's here right now. Gabby Gilanti, first-team all-county, first-team all-shore, first-team all-state, first-team all-group four, Star Ledger Athlete of the Week, ADP Player of the Year, and Star Ledger Monmouth County Player of the Year. And I don't think Gabby's here. Gabby is going to be, continue to be playing at University of Maryland in the fall. Good afternoon, this is Team. Coach Patterson, come on up. This is a man who never loses his cool. I don't think he ever can get angry.
Once again, thank you to the board for having us here, and congratulations to everyone receiving an award tonight. It's well-earned. Coach English wasn't kidding. She really was the biggest fan of the girls soccer team this year. So thank you, Coach English, for all that support. The girls soccer team at Freehold Township was a tremendously talented team, as will be attested by the fact that 10 of the seniors that are graduating this year are all going to play on in college next year. So that's an incredible accomplishment there. And while we had a tremendous amount of talent, there was never any ego, never any anybody who put themselves as bigger than the team. Everyone worked to be the best team that we could be. And that was evidenced in our Shore Conference Championship, our number-one ranking in the Shore Conference, number-one ranking in the Monmouth County, the number-seven team according to the Star Ledger in the state of New Jersey, the number-10 team in the region according to NSCIA, and the number-29 team in the country according to ESPN. I'm thankful to have a bunch of players here tonight. I apologize to those who could not make it. We have junior goalkeeper Ryan Jackson, senior goalkeeper, who will be playing at Key University next year, Sam Laird. Marissa Demonte, who we heard about before, is going to be playing at Messiah next year, senior. Senior Amanda Daly, who will be staying close to home and playing at Monmouth University next year. Christina Camassa, playing at Villanova next year. Meg Kowalski, a junior standout in the midfield. Third-team all-shore, Gabby Davis, junior. Sophomore Adrian Vitello. Sophomore Stephanie Hoot, when Sam Laird got hurt, Haley Paschall. Junior Carly Dixon. Sophomore Abby Pitts. And sophomore Ashen Dunn. Thank you all very much.
All right, that's us. That's it for Freehold Township.
Okay, next up, we have Hal High School.
Good evening, everybody. I'm telling you how high school is very proud of our athletes and our students involved in community service. And first up tonight, I'm going to introduce Camille Massari. She is our drug and alcohol counselor. And she did not bring her glasses, so I'm going to read. I'm going to tell you a little bit, and this is why I'm starting with this today, especially during this holiday season, when it's about giving back to our community, not just about winning championships. But the Hal High School won the heavyweight award from the Holiday Hunger Challenge conducted by the Food Bank of Monmouth County, Atkinson County. Through the efforts of the students and the staff of Hal High School, we collected 12,704 pounds of cans and food. This student, Sad, and the peer leadership program had a joint effort. The food competition was among the homerooms. Vicky Bowers was instrumental in organizing and promoting this event. This is also the second year that was incorporated by the Food Bank Holiday Hunger Challenge. The senior class brought in the most food, largely due to the efforts of Haley Regan, who utilized the contacts of her dad, who works at ShopRite. Thanks to him and the efforts of the peer leaders, thousands of pounds of food were donated and made many people in Monmouth County very, very happy during Thanksgiving and the holiday season. Camille?
I'm battling my own soul self, so. First, we have a sophomore who really acted herself this year for assisting Antigua. Next, we have Vicky Bowers, senior. We have Haley Regan. That's a senior. And three who couldn't make it tonight, we have Reed Dance, Emily Coquefrezisco, and Yvonne Cooney. They put up a tough effort, putting this program into food for Sad and peer leadership. And I want to thank the board and central administration, and of course, the administration of Hal High School. They've always been supportive to our Sad chapter and our peer leaders. Thank you.
Good talking with you, guys. That was a very interesting, thank you. Next up is Mrs. Hyer.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Michael Bull. He's a junior in my Graphic Arts and Technology course, which is a Level III graphics class. He was presented with a logo design contest by the New Jersey Technology and Engineering Educators Association, the NJTEEA. This is a statewide competition, and out of all the entries, Michael was selected as the state winner for the logo design contest. And his logo will now be used on all NJTEEA documents, their websites, their business cards, and anything else that the organization may need. So we would like to call Michael.
Okay, we're going to go back to the sports program. We did not have any championships at Freehold Borough. We have four, to their nine. Congratulations, Freehold. We're going to go right to Coach Connell and the field hockey program.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Connell. I'm the varsity field hockey coach at Hal. I just have one award winner tonight. Her name is Maria Madison. She had five goals, seven assists on the season. Our success was largely in part to her play on the field. She's just one of those kids where, you know, you wish you could take her and clone ten of her. I just want to thank her, thank all the parents, thank the administration for all of their support. And again, congratulations to Maria Madison.
That was some first-all-shore teams for field hockey. A lot of Freehold region people on that team. Next up, Mr. Euro and the soccer program.
Good evening. The boys soccer this year, we had two players recognized as all-shore. We have our state banquet next month. We also have all-state recognition honors. That would be junior Brandon Kotitsky. And senior Julion, first-team all-shore.
The boys soccer team is also the Shore Conference Class A-North champions. The next gentleman I'm going to call up is not only our head football coach, but he's also a proud Yaks tonight. So we'll tell you a little bit about that. But first, for football, Coach Davies.
I guess we're going to call home. I guess I have another job, I don't know about that. But thank you to the Board of Education for having us up here today. And also, congratulations to all the winners of awards and recognition, and also championship teams. We have two members who had an outstanding season for us this year that were recognized as all-state performers. First is our wide receiver, Brandon Deagle. He was ranked first-team all-shore by the Ashland Ferry Park Press, and also he was a second-team Group Four All-State performer. Brandon also broke the Shore Conference record for receiving yardage and receptions this year. Congratulations, Brandon. The other individual is our quarterback, Ryan Davies. He was ranked first-team all-shore. He was selected Group Four, first-team all-state, third-team all-group all-state this year. Has a couple records that he broke in the Shore Conference, as well as in the state. He became the first player in the Shore Conference history to throw for 3,000 yards. Second all-time touchdown passes in the state of New Jersey. And was also all-Monmouth County. Thank you.
Next up for Hal High School is our girls cross-country coach, John I.
Good evening. I'm kind of reminded about how great Jersey is here tonight because very affirming to my mind there's a tremendous amount of academic and athletic talent here. If you put jersey against most states in the country, we rank fourth or fifth. You know, you take California, take Texas, take New York, your jersey's right there. If you ask most of the coaches in this room tonight, they'll tell you that a lot of college coaches like jersey ethics because of academics and their athletic prowess. So congratulations to all the winners tonight. We had a great season this year. Our girls cross-country team finished their third consecutive undefeated season. We continued our 11-year win streak at home, which was nice. We previously finished second place in Central Jersey Group Four three times. Eventually, we finally won the state Central Jersey Group Four championship, which was a great breakthrough for us. Tonight, I have several girls here who are part of that team. Could Aileen Revell, Francesca De, Amanda Ferrara, and Naomi Barnett, please come forward. They look sweet and innocent. We made a bet early in the season that was, well, I guess, you know, as a coach and as athletes, we learn things all the time. I learned a very good lesson this year. The bet was that if we won the Central Jersey Championship, I would eat a worm. Be careful what you wish for, right? But not just any worm, but they decided that after the sight of the race, that we had an earthworm that was about six inches long. So girls, they look for that. That was a huge experience in my life. In particular, pick out Naomi Barnett. Naomi, please turn around some more. Naomi, this is her first year running cross-country. She finished 10th in the Shore Conference, 4th in Central Jersey, and not bad for your first year running cross-country. Congratulations, ladies.
I'm not sure if my representative from the SCC LA, Jessica Gilano, is here tonight. She won first place, gold medal, the SCC LA Fashion Awards this fall, and congratulations to her. Just about twelve months ago, I saw her at the Peer Leadership ugly sweater dinner, lunch, and twice a time today. And boy, you look really different than you did in that ugly sweater that you have on. But congratulations on your SCC LA Award, the gold medal for fashion. I just want to thank everybody and wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a blessed new year. Thank you. Next up is Manalton High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the faculty, staff, and administration of Howe High School, I'd love to welcome you from Manalton High. It's our pleasure to have the fall district award medals here tonight. I want to take just a second to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to recognize all these wonderful, wonderful awards and all the wonderful achievements that the students of the President of the National District have to offer. I'd like to start tonight by introducing two of our science teachers, Powers and Ms. Schreinbock. They're going to come up and speak about some of the wonderful science awards that our students have received this fall.
Good evening and Happy Holidays, everyone. I'd like to start off, I'm Janelle Powers, and I am the Advanced Placement Biology Teacher in the Science and Engineering Learning Academy here at Manalton High School. I'd like to thank the board members, Mr. Moses, Mr. Samson, and especially Mr. Simon and the administration of Manalton High School for supporting our program here. Just to give you an idea of the talent that comes from the setting districts, last year alone, we had at Manalton High School 18 Ivy League acceptances, and they all came from the Science and Engineering Program, and all of those students earned collectively a million dollars' worth of scholarships. And I'm also a member of the community. I'd like to recognize some of them. I'm also the New Jersey Science League Advisor, and we're a competition team that competes against other schools in the district, as well as the state of New Jersey. And the competitions already live winter, and we have seven teams, Biology 1, Biology 2, Chem 1, Chem 2, Physics 1, Physics 2, and Physics C. So we have quite a team, and last year, on my Biology 2 team, I had freshman Asamri Fanza, who scored number one in those exams every year for every competition that year. And we also participate in the Merck State Science Day exam, which is offered by Merck Pharmaceutical. It's an extremely difficult exam, given in May, and the students always say, "Why did we take that test? It was so hard." And well, because we try to, you know, do our best and compete and get better every year. And I have to say that Asamri placed number one in Monmouth County in that state exam for Merck. And she did a fantastic job. She's a star student, she's a number one student in her class in Science and Engineering, and she's a sophomore this year, and we're so very proud of her. So congratulations. I'm now going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Barthe Schreinbock, who's going to speak about our other two Science and Engineering students who are receiving awards this evening.
Hi, my name is Barthe Schreinbock, and I teach AP Chemistry Section of the Science and Engineering Program. I would like to thank the Board of Education and the administration of Manalton High School for supporting all the programs and the students. I have two awards to give out today. I have a student that went all the way up to the International Intel Science and Engineering Fair, which is a three-state science competition, and he ended up getting the second place in the most difficult category, the Science and Engineering category. And of course, he is from North Science and Engineering, et cetera. And for film and that, would you please come up here? A little bit about this competition, it's three stages. The first stage of the competition is taking your research project at a local level. It's called the New Jersey Science Fair, and Andy's project was completely self-driven. It started in his basement. He just started off in his basement and it went all the way up to the international level. The people, the first, second place winners at the state level are asked to go to the next level, which is called the Delaware Valley Science Fair. There, they award silver medals, gold medals, and bronze medals to each category. And all of these three medal winners go out to the next level, which is the International Intel Science and Engineering Science Fair. Andy won a silver medal, and he won like so many awards. If I start listing them, it takes about 10 minutes for them. So many cash awards, I mean, awards from Ford Martin, awards from the engineering section of some company, awards from here. Brexit gave you what Andy, like a full ride. He goes to Brexit, and he doesn't have to pay anything. Your name, he already has it, and he went on to go to the International Intel Competition. He ended up getting the second place overall. In addition, he won a trip to London. He went two weeks to a trip to London. He had a trip to San Antonio, and then some more scholarships. It's like once in a lifetime. People think that just even getting to the International Science Fair is accomplishment, and getting second place in the most difficult category, I don't know what I can say about Andy. Congratulations. Andy's been accepted to the class of 2016 Massachusetts Constitutorate of Technology. The other award winner, Alana Porter, is not able to make it today evening. Alana has been named as one of the recipients of the prestigious Siemens Award for Advanced Placement in Science and Math. This is given to two students from every state, and Alana happens to be one from New Jersey. You don't know who the other one is. The Siemens Award for Advanced Placement is for the student that gets the maximum number of fights in about eight or more Math and Science AP exams. Alana happens to be one from New Jersey. She will be getting a $2,000 scholarship to the college that she's going to go to. Alana is going to go to MIT as well. Both Andy and Alana contrast studies, and they've been admitted to the class of 2016. So Andy and Alana are also going to be doing an internship at Siemens as part of the Siemens Award. She was not able to make it today, but then we congratulate her.
Thank you very much, Powers and Ms. Schreinbock. These are two of the wonderful hardworking teachers in our Science and Engineering Department that just does very, very wonderful things at Manalton High School. Next, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize the six members of our All-Sure Force. The group is selected by audition from students in Monmouth Ocean County. I'd like to introduce them, as I called them, Ali Ghorit, Stephen Bronstein, Julian Cohen, Sabrina Gutwick, Cassidy Rosenblatt, and Michael Maxson. I was actually disinterested that all the members of that particular group are performing currently at the county council. So I have just another round of applause for them.
And next up, last but not least, we have Marlborough High School.
Good evening. I also agree with Mr. Moses, this is one of my favorite nights of the year as well. Just sitting over in the audience, I can't tell you how many times I've said wow, and how much I smiled this evening here in all the accomplishments that took place in our district. I also understand why it's so hard to win in athletics in our district, as well as the accomplishments. But anyway, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ryland to acknowledge our students at Monmouth High School. Mr. Ryland?
First, I'd like to introduce our All-Sure Force performers, Anisha Nanijaran, Sierra Rosen, Steven Leavitt. Anisha's an alto one, Sierra was an alto one, and Steven was a tenor. Steven just informed me that this is his fourth year as an All-Sure Force player. There's one team at Marlborough that did not win, but I want to recognize them. They were our girls soccer team. Our girls soccer team was the 15th seed in Central Jersey Group 4, and we made it all the way to the finals and lost in triple overtime, which is penalty kicks, to the number one seeded team, Montgomery. So I'd like to give them a round of applause. It was nice for them to even be there. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Kelly Schwer, and our Esprit Park Press, and our StarLeger South Jersey Coach of the Year, Ms. McNamara.
Good evening, everybody, and thank the Board of Education for letting us come here and giving us our medals. And congratulations to all the other participants that received recognition. Girls volleyball is in this area of Pino, and when I took over the team about five years ago, it was almost like a sign-off. So they have a Shore Conference championship, and the second A1 championship in, you know, five years, and the seniors on this team have worked really hard. It's really an attribute to how hard this team were. The girls really are all about heart, all about team hustle. That was our, you know, our thing to say in the warm-up. I just totally enjoyed working with these girls. They were the ones that wanted to stay after, you know, half hour, hour, and just work. They just had the will, and the team chemistry to win. At this time, I would like to recognize the team, Haley Winchell. Marla Durian. Jessie Yu. And I want to recognize Esprit Park Shore Conference, oh, yeah, Shore Conference First Team Senior Lily May. Okay, and First Team Shore Conference and Player of South Jersey StarLeger, and Third Team StarLeger State Team, Jet Manson. Congratulations, girls.
All right, thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Boyle and Mr. Samson. Have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you very much.
All right, before, as the lab supervisors are getting prepared, our school nurses have been sitting here very patiently, and I just want to recognize all of you. One of the things that is on the agenda tonight to be approved is an updated school nursing plan to be compliant with changing state expectations, and to give you an understanding of that framework. It went from literally like a two-page document to a little bit more of an illness document, and it required a great deal of work from our school nurses. And they're here to see that it's up for approval through a board resolution, so I'd like to just recognize our school nurses. And first off, folks have no idea, if you haven't been in a private high school in the past 15, 20 years, the job of the school nurses is unbelievable. It is constant. By selecting the letter. Okay, I'm still waiting, as you can see on the side, for some controllers. Is there a minute? Yeah, there is a minute. All right, we're moving. It's okay, you don't have to redo it. One hand is a good, then the other. All right, three more controllers left. This is where the teachers would see how their class is progressing. Some more. So I'd like to make sure you hit enter. Let me just pump you to the next question, and then I'll come back to the staff. Here, we decided to jump to a HESPA mathematics problem. Again, if you just want to choose A, B, C, or D, you might have to take out the calculators and calculate it. But if you could just make a selection, and then I will show you how the staff will see the results of their students. formative assessment where their students are at. But this is from the HESPA workbook. So keep this in mind as we have our wide range of students with their different abilities What is nice is that the faculty do assign each student to a controller, but just obviously when they are given this task to answer it. use an ID number, just a basic number. So as they go through a quick do now or a quick classroom assignment, they could really judge, do they know material prior to being in a classroom, and also as a quick formative assessment to the start of class. So these responders are also quite fun for the students because you can also time them to see who's the quickest in answering and things like that, but it's also a very quick and efficient way for the teachers to evaluate their students. So this is just a little demo of the technology that is available here at the regional high school district. I will now, you can actually turn the responders walk if you want. It's the top left corner button. A little tiny one. If someone wants to maybe collect them, you want to buy with them on a big truck. As I was collecting it, I just wanted to make some instructions. At the Codia Nina Baron, from Hope Town High School. And that is from Howell High School. We have from Freehold, Joey N'Gwo. And Denise Jenga is from Menalton, but is not here with us yet.
I bet for some of you in the audience, this little activity might have increased your anxiety level, or at least when we gave you the responder, not knowing what was going to come next. And that's pretty much how a lot of our students feel when they enter our classroom. A little bit anxious, uncertain, unsure, not knowing what's going to happen. So we believe in creating a classroom environment that is conducive to learning and supports our vision that all students can learn. So now I'm just going to play a brief little clip for you to watch.
Dismissed from drama school with a note that read, wasting your time, she's too shy to put her best foot forward. Turned down by the Denver Recording Company who said, we don't like their sound, and guitar music is on the way out. A failed soldier, farmer, and real estate agent. At thirty-eight years old, he went to work for his father as a handman. Cut from a high school basketball team, he went home, locked himself in his room, cried. A teacher told him he was too stupid to learn anything, and he should go into a field where he might succeed by virtue of his pleasant personality. Died from a newspaper because he lacked imagination and had no original ideas. His fiance died, he failed in business twice, he had a nervous breakdown, and he was defeated in eight elections. If you've never failed, you've never lived.
The math department here at Freehold Regional encourages students to become capable and competent problem solvers, giving them the opportunity to experience success by providing a safe and comfortable classroom environment where, like this video says, they're not afraid to take risks. On this slide, you can just see the offerings that we offer here at the Freehold Regional High School District, the math courses. And we also have some select courses that we offer at the Science and Engineering Learning Center and the Computer Science Academy that is exclusive to students in those learning centers and academies.
On this slide, you'll see our advanced placement courses. In the mathematics department, we do have four main courses. The last course, the AP Computer Science, is sold before the Freehold Borough Learning Program. And as you see, our students are doing phenomenally well and above the global average. And as a team of mathematics supervisors, we are continuing to work together to get more access for students in our AP growth program as well as continue their success with us.
Just like our AP scores, our HESPA scores keep rising. In this slide, I'm just showing you that our class of 2011 is above the proficiency rate of our fellow schools in the same demographic group, and well above what New Jersey is hitting as an average. In our high schools, we have a lot of different programs to help our students get ready for the HESPA. Some of the most beneficial ones that we feel as supervisors is the extended time after school. We always get a lot of students to participate in that. The kids really turn out and they enjoy it. The individual pupil instruction is a pull-out program that we do during the school day so that students can get extra help in mathematics and prepping for the HESPA. And then, of course, our academic support instruction class is one of our best programs that we run in the district. All of the programs that you see up on this slide focus on test-taking strategies, not just the mathematics, but how can they do better on a multiple-choice test and open-ended tests. So we'll give them the different pieces that they need in order to succeed on the HESPA.
Our goal as mathematics supervisors is to make sure that we know that all of our students are learning the best that they can. As supervisors, we facilitate the growth of our students by facilitating the growth of our teachers. We offer support and sharing of best practices, and we encourage, I'm sorry, encourage best practices. We supply resources for our teachers, such as the remote responders that you have in front of you. We offer training along with that and research. We promote data-driven decision-making, a lot of words there, and we conduct department meetings with time for collaboration and professional development. Our instructional strategies include, but are not limited to, formative assessments, differentiated instruction, cooperative learning, think, pair, share, and technology-assisted We want our students to be able to reason, problem solve, make connections, create models, collaborate with peers, and communicate about mathematics.
Lots of technology going on in the math department. Our teachers are constantly teaching us about what's available out there. We have many teachers now doing podcasting. I don't know if anybody's heard of that, but it's a way that kids can get extra help 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're connected to smartphones. Student quickly asks a question to a teacher, it goes right to the teacher's smartphone, the teacher can automatically respond to the student's question via email, and they get the answers right away. So two o'clock in the morning, they could be studying for exams, and they could have assistance and support. The United Streaming videos are really beneficial for us in the math department. One of the biggest questions that our math students ask us all the time is, when are we ever going to use this? Well, with United Streaming, we can bring it into the classroom. We can show them how imaginary numbers work in the real world. Why do we need to study imaginary numbers? Boom, it's right there for us. The SmartView calculator software, powerful, powerful for our students. They get to visualize graphs instantly just by putting the information into the SmartView. The students can watch what the teacher's plugging into the calculator, and the graph appears immediately on the screen. So now they're able to visualize what's going on on their calculator right to a graph on the screen. Our new, one of our newest programs is the APMGIA learning. Our out-risked students are involved in APMGIA, and great program. They are linked to prizes. So the more problems the students do, either on their own time or in school, they can receive a prize to target for a gift card. They can get money for Dunkin' Donuts. They can get money to send and contribute to any worthwhile cause that they want. So the teachers are using all of these different technologies to bring their lessons to life, really, and show what we, how we use it in the real world.
One of the other advantages of the type of software is it's not only tutorial, which the students are familiar with and some know, and it's all web-based, and students can do all of this at home, but it also offers live support. Not just live support that's going to text back and forth to them, but it's also auditory. They can listen and talk and communicate as if they're on the phone through some of these softwares to get support 24/7, which is really nice. We also have a group of hardware that is just top-notch. The remote responders that you see help us with data-driven decision-making, formatively within the classroom, sometimes for quizzes and tests that they can calculate that way, and teachers get instant feedback and know instantly how to change the lesson. We are tracking calculators in all of our classes, and we have the tablet, which I brought one of those to show you. This tablet is designed for the student. Okay, so if the student's sitting in class and there's a demonstration up on the board, you can hand this to a student, the student can write on this, it goes to the board. It's like another wireless mask with a glitch, you can write on it. And anything the student's right on here can go on the board. Anything that's written on the board can be saved to a computer, so you have another technology tool that we can use to, I don't want our students to know while they're sitting in our seats. We also have the individual whiteboards, which is not hardware or software, but it is another category that we use to get, again, get instant feedback. Feedback is so important. Our scientific calculators, our digital whiteboards, not every group has them, but most of our classrooms are, do have them, and our teachers are using them, but our students are also using them. We're getting the students out of their seats and involve them in learning. Then we have our netbooks and our laptops. Again, our students modeling for you, so the use in the classroom, but they use them to go on live sites, to do research, to compare mathematically, and there are some wonderful software pieces. One listed up there was the Geometer Sketch Kit, where students develop their own answers to why something works and can demonstrate it for everyone in their class.
I'm going to speak a little bit about the competitions and contests that we offer to math students in our schools. The first one I'm going to speak about is the American Mathematics Competition, which is sponsored by the Mathematical Association of America, and that's given every February in each of our six high schools. And this is open to all of our students in grades nine through twelve. There's two tests at AMC Ten, they call it AMC Twelve. And it's a seventy-five-minute exam, emphasizes problem-solving, consistent of a mix of easy, challenging, and fun questions aligned to curriculum standards. And those who score in the top two, they have to attend for the AMC Ten, or the top five percent AMC, I'm sorry, yeah, the top five percent AMC Twelve, participate in the American Intitational Mathematics Challenge held in March, and a number of real regional students over the years qualified to participate in that contest. We also offer Math League as a club in most of our schools. It's the, most of our schools have a shore Math League, which involves math students from a number of high schools, high school teams in Monmouth County who compete monthly in a math competition, and they earn points for their schools and also individual scores. And there's a thirty-minute individual component, a seven-minute relay, and a team component. And at the end of the year, all the Monmouth County teams meet for a dinner and prizes are awarded to the top teams. Also with that, we have the New Jersey Math League. Some of the schools also participate in that, which is a similar competition, but that's statewide. The Moody's Mega Math Challenge is, several of our schools participate in this annual challenge, which is held in March, highly competitive for all high school students, funded by the Moody's Foundation and organized by the Society for Industrial and Applied Mathematics. And this contest requires students to solve an open-ended, realistic math modeling problem in like fourteen hours. It's usually a Saturday test and a Sunday test, there's two options. Focuses on real-world issues, Spotlight's applied math is a powerful problem-solving tool, and they have about $115,000 in scholarship prizes available. Also, we, many of our teachers participate in Pi Day, which is celebrated on March 14th, or 314, which is the approximate value of pi, the ratio of circumference of a circle to its diameter. And many of our teachers participate in the district in their own ways. They give projects or class activities where they incorporate pi in their lessons that day. Freerice.com, I'm not sure if you've ever heard of that. That's a nonprofit website run by the United Nations World Food Program, who basically have two goals, to provide education to everyone for free and to help end world hunger by providing rice to hungry people for free. And what this is, is just anybody can go anytime, students can answer questions individually, or they can create a group, like a real regional group or one of the schools groups, and they answer various questions on various subjects, including mathematics. And each question they answer right is equivalent to ten grains of rice. And then as they get a question right, a harder one appears, and then you can keep going. And many of our teachers announce it in class, and many of our students participate, and since 2007, ninety-one billion grains of rice have been donated by this website. The ones with the double asterisks, they are exclusive to the science and engineering students at Menalton. Mu Theta Alpha is the Mathematics Honor Society for high school students and community college students, and Menalton is part of, has a chapter through the Science and Engineering Learning Center. And this inspires interest in math, builds strong scholarship in the subject, and promotes the enjoyment of math by providing special events and competitions throughout the year. And two of the competitions they partake in is Log Run Contest and Rocket City Math League. The Mousetrap Competition is sponsored by Wyner University in Pennsylvania, and this consists of hundreds of high schools from the mid-Atlantic region, and they compete to build a mousetrap-powered device, and they're given a design problem with
It's the, most of our schools have a Shore Math League, which involves math students from a number of high schools, high school teams in Monmouth County who compete monthly in a math competition. And they earn points for their schools and also individual scores. And there's a 30-minute individual component, a 7-minute relay, and a team component. And at the end of the year, all the Monmouth County teams meet for like a dinner and prizes are awarded to the top teams. Also with that, we have the New Jersey Math League. Some of the schools also participate in that, which is a similar competition, but that's statewide. The Moody's Mega Math Challenge is several of our schools participate in this annual challenge, which is held in March, highly competitive for all high school students, funded by the Moody's Foundation and organized by the Society for Industrial and Applied Mathematics. And this contest requires students to solve an open-ended, realistic math modeling problem in like 14 hours. There's usually a Saturday test and a Sunday test, there's two options. Focuses on real-world issues, spotlights applied math as a powerful problem-solving tool, and about $115,000 in scholarship prizes available. Also, many of our teachers participate in Pi Day, which is celebrated on March 14th or 314, which is the approximate value of pi, the ratio of circumference of a circle to its diameter. And many of our teachers participate in the district in their own ways. They give projects or class activities where they incorporate pi in their lessons at that. Freerice.com, I'm not sure if you've ever heard of that. That's a nonprofit website run by the United Nations World Food Program, who basically have two goals, to provide education to everyone for free and to help end world hunger by providing rice to hungry people for free. And what this is, is just anybody can know anytime, students can answer questions individually or they can create a group, like a real regional group or one of the schools groups, and answer various questions on various subjects, including mathematics. And each question they answer right is equivalent to 10 grains of rice. And then as they get a question right, a harder one appears and then they can keep going. And many of our teachers announce it in class and many of our students participate. And since 2007, 91 billion grains of rice have been donated by this website. The ones with the double asterisks there are exclusive to the Science and Engineering students at Manaloo. Mu Theta Alpha is the Mathematics Honor Society for high school students and community college students. And Manaloo has a chapter through the Science and Engineering Learning Center. And this inspires interest in math, develops strong scholarship in the subject, and promotes the enjoyment of math by providing special events and competitions throughout the year. And two of the competitions they partake in is Log On Contest and Rocket City Math League. The Mousetrap Competition is sponsored by Wyner University in Pennsylvania, and this consists of hundreds of high schools from the mid-Atlantic region, and they compete to build a mousetrap-powered device. And they're given a design problem with a set of specifications, and they encourage to learn and develop their skills of planning, design, and implementation while working in a team environment as do practice in engineers. And the single asterisks at the bottom there, the ACSL, which is the American Computer Science League, is exclusive to the Real Borough Learning Academy, which is an extracurricular club where they need various times monthly to prepare for computer science and programming contests, which is held every Memorial Day weekend each year. Over 200 teams participate worldwide, from the United States, Canada, Europe, and Asia, and it's another opportunity for students. And finally, the NJIT Programming Contest is again available for the Computer Science Academy students at Real Borough. This is run by the Computer Science Department at NJIT. It's a yearly contest for New Jersey high school students, and students complete programming assignments and are ranked according to the number of correct programs they deliver in two and a half hours. Winners receive a plaque, and the computer science students have been first-place winners three times since 2006, most recently this past year. Okay, not only as supervisors, we give our teachers and students opportunities to learn and participate in the learning process in the classroom, but also outside the classroom. We recognize the importance of the second half of the day with sports and clubs. In order for these opportunities to be available to students, we encourage our teachers to participate in serving as coaches or advisors, very relevant to this evening. And the following list that just scrolled across the screen are the sports and clubs that math teachers in the district advise or coach. And we counted 97 math teachers in the district, and if you can see that number up there, you can see that they're very much involved in the second part of the day, coaching, advising, 108 different extracurricular activities and sports. As you saw by the presentation this evening.
Okay, next up we have Board Reports, Curriculum and Instruction.
So we had a meeting, this is the Curriculum Committee meeting, we had a meeting earlier at 6:00. We have a couple initiatives that we have updates on. The Curriculum and Instruction Office received the SAT data from the virtual SAT. I believe for most part, everyone went up. However, we do recognize that some of our students are utilizing the resources to the extent that we feel comfortable with. So they're going to talk with the teachers and see what we can change next time, maybe involve the parents or whatnot. The next SAT that we're aiming for would be the May SAT, and registration for that will be coming out in February. As an update for curriculum renewal, the committee has received a CD of reviewed course guides, and there's a couple of formatting that should be complete in early January. The district course offerings for next year are up on the homepage. Students, eighth grade and current high school students can go there, and we can as well. As an update for Mandarin, as some of you may know, there's only one class of Mandarin left. And I know, at least for me personally, I feel like it should be something that our district should be strong in. So we're looking into some ways we can perhaps spark interest. One of it may possibly be seeing if we should develop Mandarin 4 or 5, because we have softwares and juniors who are currently at the top level of Mandarin. So we're going to look in that. Then we have a couple elective courses, a tentative list of requested elective courses that may come up 2013 to 2014, including Education Theory, Anatomy and Physiology, Computer Science, and Intro to Engineering.
Thank you, Heshi. And as Mary Anne Group was meeting in one classroom, we're, credit calls, all doing our own reading about some of the policies. And tonight we have the first reading of the Dating and Violence in School Policy. This will be the first public reading. Hopefully, the second public reading will be in January. Dr. Hazel tonight spearheaded the committee. And I personally thank the committee of staff and students, as well as the committee, the board members and committee members, for working on this Dating and Violence policy. Thank you. Any other Board Reports? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we take the entire agenda. And we have a motion for that? Discussion? Yes, you have a yellow sheet, H2, and you also have a white sheet that has a removal of the substitute personnel.
If everyone could turn to L2, which is page 18, which is the Dating Violence, there's two things I'd like to note. The first thing is on the top of page 19, it reads, "The responses shall be tiered," the responses being responses to an incident of dating violence. Tiered consideration given to the seriousness and the number of previous occurrence of acts or incidents in which both the victim and alleged aggressor have been involved. I'd like to know if there was a reason why we said both, or can we say either/or? Because I think it's important to look not just at the incidences where the two have been together, to see if there's a history of someone being a victim or a history of someone being an aggressor.
Yeah, I think we're finally looking at that. This is just the first one. But we do have a great deal of suggestions from the committee that will also fall more into the regulation under this, where they were pulling apart a lot of that question when you tiered it, worded it this way. So, yeah, we have absolutely no problem looking at that prior to the next meeting.
Great, and there's also one other. In the HIP policy, we had changed the language from grade 7 to 12 to, I forget what the wording was, Dr. Hazel, I need to remember. We had said something that didn't quantify what grade it was because some students may not fall in a specific grade.
Right, all the students do range from grades 9 through 12, even though there may be students who go beyond until age 21 for age of entitlement. But I think we would be covered if we say grades 9 through 12, because they could hold grade 12 for a number of years.
So if we could just change the grade 7 to grade 9, or look at our HIP policy to see how we worded it there?
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Dr. Hazel, just from my own knowledge, could you explain to me how it is the school's responsibility to take care of dating violence when, it just seems over the years since I left education, schools are taking on more and more of the job of parents? So I'd like to know how this becomes our responsibility.
Yes, anything that disrupts the educational climate in our buildings, I think this is really an health growth of the HIP policy for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. But we, again, if it comes to the attention of administration, we do have a responsibility to investigate, if we need to contact the authorities. Our administrators would conduct a full investigation, and if something did happen within the parameters of our schools, then we would implement our code of conduct and action would be taken.
And this was all, this came about by politicians, you check?
This here is another, yes, a public law. We are mandated to have a Dating Violence in School policy on record. This is not discretionary, as well as the HIP policy.
Thank you so much.
You know what? I agree with you 100% actually about parenting. As a matter of fact, we talked about that in the, well, some of us mentioned it in the Curriculum Committee meeting. And just so you know, there's another thing that gets us in the business of parenting too. There's this online financial literacy requirement, and some of it has to do with balancing a checkbook. This was a law that John Corezian spearheaded. That's another thing that gets us, you know, teaching gets out of balance. So there's other things out there that get us into parenting, or not us, but the teachers involved in parenting.
Thank you for that, Mike. Discussion? Any other discussion? All right, seeing none.
Actually, I have one more question. Sure. This was actually on the bid for the salt in the sand. We take possession of it before the link is that how salt and works?
No, this is for the process of plowing and salting and sanding our parking lots.
Okay, because I just wasn't clear about that, because it didn't, I'm sorry, you misread it, didn't talk about the actual plowing. So I just thought we were taking possession of it and then our staff goes out there. I used to hear something and throws the salt in the sand down. No.
Let's not add more work to the teachers' shoulders anymore. Okay, here we go. Mr. Voice?
Mr. Astolfo?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazin?
Yes.
Mr. Moog?
Yes.
All business? New business?
I just would like to introduce, we have an opportunity to introduce a new staff member who was approved on tonight's agenda, Lorraine Simon, who will be joining the business office. Actually, she's already called in the business office as a controller.
Okay, can we have a motion to close this one for me?
Motion.
All those with you? Thank you all for coming. Thanks for asking.